I saved volunteer. You got it. It was good. There you go.
I don't know what you're talking about.
Taking the protection down. And then.
There we go.
Nine each.
Yeah.
Good number two.
Really, your ex?
I got three ex action.
Yeah.
Three years of. Late time when it was wet.
These guys were not.
I wasn't, I wasn't trying for awareness, but everybody.
I'll be the hundred.
It is absolutely soft. Yeah. No. I could tell. Oh, you're taking hold. I'm only. Yeah, I don't.
That's. Always tell you. Want to press it out?
Yeah, I got my, I just, I got. You do that for some farther. Talking to somebody.
So it's just a lot of trumping. The Harvard's got a whole.
So you don't have any.
Yeah.
Just like.
So ultimate wishy-wash thing. Pull their application.
Yeah. We will probably be seeing them back.
Okay, at seven o'clock, we can begin. Welcome everybody to the December 21st, 2021 zoning board of appeals meeting. I also want to apologize to the applicants that are here tonight that we would have dealt with last meeting, but we had circumstances arise that we didn't have enough folks to conduct a legal meeting, so. Hopefully that was not too much of a hardship. At this time, what we like to do is have what we call an open forum and open up the meeting to any questions, comments, concerns regarding zoning board business, and not necessarily the items on the agenda because there'll be opportunity for that during the public hearings. Well, go ahead and open forum.
Yeah. Um, then bringing one, three, three, eighteen, three from room. Sorry for the clerk. I don't have a written statement against you tonight. Um, I did want to draw the zoning board's attention to the first state mandated project that's coming into Queensburg. Um, it's over our Scotts Ridge Solar. So there's some. The layout of it, and the information is found on the state's website. And I'm going to ask the zoning board as well as the citizens, and I, I expressed this at another meeting earlier this month, that we really should be looking at what is zoning, what are we doing about these state mandated solar projects that are coming in? This is 170 acres, it's 20 megawatts, it'll have forty, over 100,000 solar panels. It, it, where is all this waste going? What are we doing as a town? State mandated projects, yes, it is coming from the state down, but that does not mean that we don't have some influence and some power. Uh, Article 10 project in Kosaki, that was 2.2 megawatts going into, into that town. And the citizens did rally and they did speak up and they did, did submit documentation to the state board, and they were able to get the setbacks changed. They were able to enhance the taxpayers' properties and not just let the state roll over them. When I brought this issue up, I think it was the planning board meeting last week, the town attorney just said that it's a state project and the state's going to do what the state does. That may hold true to a certain extent, but we are taxpayers and we do have some rights and we should be speaking out. So I'm going to ask the zoning board to, you know, look at this, think about it. How can the zoning board look at our zoning code? What can we do to begin to protect taxpayers? It's the first one coming in. And they don't tell you where they're going to go. They just sort of show up. Um, and I also wanted to hand out some other information. This is more about Oak Hill, but the solar projects are all very similar as they go through. Um, this is the money. So this is the money from Nicetta, 7.7 million going to that project, and then two mortgages, and the mortgage is total over 29 million. Um, then the decommissioning plan of which I've highlighted, mainly because I know so much about the projects now and after two and a half years of solar, I can really redline these projects, and I do it for other towns. Um, so this explains why the decommissioning plan may not be adequate and what will happen to the taxpayers down the road. Uh, I do a handy dandy spreadsheet of what it is, what it is not. And then that, that'll help you when you begin to hear about these other solar projects. How do you compare them? What do they mean? Um, this is tree cutting. Uh, it happened at Oak Hill, it's going to be happening at Spatch Ridge. They say it's 170 acres, as far as I can tell, they're going to be clear cutting well over 60 acres. Um, we would have to wait and see. But it's just, you know, when you look at the, the maps, the more information, and then, you know, they come in, the developers say one thing and then they do something totally different. And that's what this shows, it's a comparison of 2019. And specifically in 2019, they said the project would set back from, from Queensburg ground 1,500 feet, and the negative deck for the 2021 project says it's 800 feet. A significant change, and what happens to taxpayers? What happens to our lands? And how can zoning begin to look at it and help us? So I have a set for the clerk, and I only wrote two sets. I only have two sets of this. Yeah. Or I figure there's not, everybody wants to see that's part there.
That's.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I think I'll, I'll send those all to, to the clerk, because I know that's easier.
Yeah. Stating paper.
Well, sometimes people like to see the things. Um, Senator Hishy's staff came out to my property today, so I had a bunch of documents put together so that we could look at this and, you know, what is going on legislatively? What needs to be done to protect the taxpayers? This is just the beginning of what the state wants. And the state, the amount of solar and wind that they want to put in is astronomical, and it will impact, there will be more in Queensburg.
Now, this doesn't qualify as an Article 10 project, though, right?
Oak Hill Solar is not, they, those are below 20 megawatts. Once you hit 20 megawatts, you can go in as an Article 10 or a section 94C.
Which means if the locality has like less input?
It'll have less input, but I think, you know, I've, I've watched a lot of towns, I've spoken in a lot of the hearings, and the towns that the citizens speak up, they are able to move setbacks, they are able to protect certain areas. Um, if you listen to specifically the Article 10 hearing for Kosaki for Hefty Green, I've never heard so much go on to the state record where they actually were beginning to consider um, the cumulative effect on a town from so much solar. You know, how much acreage are we taking? Um, town of Glennett will be over 3,000 acres if they get, if the state gets their way. You know, so those citizens are speaking up and actively coming out against the section 94C, and the town is backing them up. I just don't know what, I think our town should be backing up the citizens.
Is there a good transmission infrastructure to support all these larger projects?
The section 94C on Spatch Ridge will be connecting directly into the high-power transmission lines. It bypasses the substation.
So it is, I guess, doable in that regard?
Yes.
Right.
And, and they will just increase the substations. Uh, Hefty Green and Kosaki, they're building their own substation. That's how much money goes into these things. It's, it is an astronomical amount of money. So if they don't have what they need, they just build it. It'll, and more will come. You know, once the developers, if, if they think a town is a pushover, they just keep coming. And there's other projects for Queensburg, you know, but nobody really knows, I don't know where they are. I see, I see it on the queue, but I don't know an address.
Was this, been submitted to the town yet? Good, no.
This section 94C, I don't know. You know, but it's, it's, it's well through Nicetta. You know, and once it gets too far, then what can somebody do or say? It's just like, you know, the 11th hour at a zoning board or a planning board meeting, if somebody's already done all the work and then took five meetings, the board is unlikely to turn something down. Um, you know, so the developers get in with Nicetta, start getting the money, start getting the approvals, and they're like, yeah, we'll talk to that town. You know, I didn't know about Oak Hill until seven days before a public hearing. That had been going on for well over a year. You know, how, what can I do? So, um, I do ask the zoning board to look at it, think about it, what can we do with zoning regulations and laws? What should we be doing to, um, support our taxpayers? Because if we don't want to live next to solar, we're all leaving. So, thank you.
Unless we have anybody else interested in the open forum? If not, we'll go ahead and close the open forum. And our first, first order of business would be Richard Kirk. And if you just give me where. You have a. Just give a pointer.
Nobody. Me was the D and N. Everything. Okay, Richard's here tonight. He owns a little over 16 acres of, of land on Gage Road, which is about a half mile, three quarters of a mile in from Route 20 on the westerly side. Uh, he'd like to subdivide that land into two parcels. Uh, one for himself here would be a little over 10 acres, and the second one here for his son, which is over five acres. Uh, he owns, it's a little over 103 feet of frontage on Gage Road here. Uh, so the lot in the rear for his son would have a 60-foot frontage which meets the town code. Then he would be left with the 43, a little over 43 feet. So that's what we're asking the variance for, variance of 16 some odd feet on Gage Road for his frontage. Lots of big lots in the back. Uh, there's really no impacted neighbors. There's a house here. Uh, there is a driveway here already. There'll only be one driveway going in that'll split off to Mr. Kirk's property and then extend back into his son's property. Actually, he's working on extending it, uh, right now. Uh, other than that, this doesn't have any real impact on the health, safety, welfare of the neighborhood because it's way back here and there's no adjoining houses or anything back there. Would he do it any other way other than getting more land from a neighbor or something? Uh, no, he can't. It's itself created, yes, I guess, just by his desire to have his house and his son's house back here. Um, that's pretty much it. Questions? There'll be one single driveway on the 60-foot strip, and there'll be an easement across that, which we're working with the planning board on that easement. No, no, it'll be set in the middle of the 60-foot strip.
Now, there is an existing driveway there now, correct? Okay, so does that run closer to, I guess that's the southern?
Be the southern side?
Yeah.
You're saying it's closer, it's closer to that, yeah.
Okay. But then it's got to be a shared access to both properties.
Right.
Pay more than a lawyer to make sure that he's made. So agreement is.
These ones all drawn up, weren't it the Teresa Backner desires?
Okay. Yeah, and again, we have determined, again, there was a need for 60 feet. The one parcel meets that requirement. The second, uh, I think it's got 43.46, so.
Right. 16.5.
Yeah.
Or.
In fact, I'm, I'm just wondering, maybe we could just round it off to 17, so we need that. There's a little wiggle on there. You can be seated. Any other questions? And so my understanding is that the planning board is kind of waiting for our decision on this.
Yeah, we have a public hearing for January 20th, so um, I think they're kind of waiting, necessarily waiting, but, you know, hoping that we have this straightaway by then.
Yeah. As it stands, there's only one large parcel, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Unless we have any other questions, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we open a public hearing regarding this matter. Hi.
Yeah.
All right. Hi. 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 Do we have any Zoom participants? Okay. Given that, I'm just, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing regarding this matter. Hi. All right. Hi. And we had dealt with Seeker in the October meeting, so we've got that covered. Uh, so at this point, I'm going to run through the factors to be considered. Now, the first being whether an undesirable change would be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties. Uh, whether the benefits sought by the applicant can be achieved by a feasible alternative to the variance. Now, because even if you, there's not really enough there, even if you split the difference and you'd need two variants, so. Uh, whether the requested variance is substantial. I don't think so either. Um, would the variance have an adverse impact on the physical, environmental or environmental conditions in the neighborhood?
Yeah.
Uh, whether the alleged difficulty would self-create? Than they are. But I, I guess in a sense it was by the taking the subdivision. Uh, so given that, if somebody be willing to make a motion for this? Yeah.
I'm making a motion to bring in Richard Kirk, our applicant, six inch trail, also sponsored by York, 12020, for a side lot road frontage on 660 Road, 65.00, there's one dash 31 area from 31. It rode frontage variance of 17 feet as prescribed is 3.5.93. Oh.
And for findings of.
And for the findings of section 14.5.2.
I think the addition that is 65.30. It's left the three out when she read it. Oh, yeah, well, that's, I lucked it out when I wrote it down, so.
Hi. Hi.
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi.
Hi.
So you're all set? Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. But I have no questions.
Yeah.
Is that why?
Anyway, it wasn't the. That wasn't natural. Jeffrey? So, again, if you just want to give us an overview of what you're.
So this is, this is my house here. My house here, looking to build this pole barn 90 feet from the road, 20 feet from my own property line. This property here, I have 21 acres, it was pretty far back, too.
About your own parcel as well.
Correct. This is, this is also mine, this is 8 acres. This is out of two. Oh. Two years. And there. Two acres. Um, I'm looking to put that 20 feet from my own property line. Um, the main reason is to just have a, a nice lawn here. Got some really nice trees on my property line that I wouldn't really want to damage. Um, that's pretty much it, just dry sordid building, tractor, bulldozer, stuff like that, stuff I don't want to get wet.
So this is a 48 by 56 foot?
Correct, with a 16-foot lean to.
Right, with the whole footprint, didn't?
Uh, I think it's 60 by 60 by 56.
60, okay.
With the length of, correct.
Oh, it's a 12-foot lean to then?
Uh, oh, I'm sorry, 64 by 56, it's a, it's a 58, or sorry, 48 by 56 with a 16-foot porch on the side. So yeah, it's 64, 64.
And this is, and it's not.
I got a little friend that like.
And its height is?
16 foot in the main shop, and then there is attic trusses, I believe. The total height is 31 feet.
Okay.
Which is the same height as my house.
Okay, which is considered two stories.
Correct. I didn't want to overtell.
The distance, say, from the footprint uh, to the house itself is approximately.
From from this corner to that corner?
Yes.
Uh, about 25 feet?
Okay. So so you'd be moving equipment in and out of the, the pole barn?
Right, the doors are here.
Okay.
Two on this end, they have three on the back side.
Question? Okay. Uh, again, make a motion that we open the public hearing regarding this particular application. Hi.
Hi.
All right. Hi. 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 Nobody on Zoom? Okay. Um, given that, I guess I'll go ahead and make a motion that we close the public hearing. All right.
Yeah.
Yes, I. Okay, and I'm going to now proceed with the the factors to be considered, and again, we dealt with Seeker in the October meeting. And just to verify this again, we're just looking at a 20-foot variance. Okay. Um, so the first factor, again, whether an undesirable change would be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties? Uh, whether the benefits sought by the applicant be achieved by a feasible alternative to the variance? Not desired. Well, I, I, again, I think it makes sense to have it further away from the house, you know, because otherwise you, you wouldn't be able to even drive a vehicle that.
Right. And I was, the view from my house, if it was closer, it would almost look like you'd just see a building to your side. This will still give me a nice view off of that.
So I'm going to say no, based on practicality and aesthetics. And it does make sense to, again, keep it on this lot, even though he does own that one. Um, whether the requested variance is substantial? Right. So it's I mean, it's not substantial, uh. Okay, uh, would the variance have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood? Okay, with the variance having adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood? Whether the alleged difficulty with self-creating. Yeah, I think so. I almost say yes, because that, that particular site was chosen, so. Well, right, and that's, that also lends it to that. So again, we'll need somebody to make a motion regarding this.
So I will move to grant your fedders to the bank, if you want, Pattersonville. A 20-foot. West side.
Yes.
Lot variance. Uh, on. It's property 34.00 dash to this 8.2. Under. 4.5, 0.278 and 8.672 for the town of Queensburg. Loan variance provided a building primitive standard six months. After construction of a. Oh, our 48 by, or 64 by 56. For a pole barn.
And it's a two-story pole barn.
Considered a two-story.
Yeah.
Hi.
Okay, you're all set?
Thank you very much. Urban.
Great, thank you.
Great group of guys to work with. Appreciate it.
Has somebody looked at the meeting minutes?
I've noticed that there is. In the. Paragraph at the bottom of page one, it starts with 30. Her husband is two of section 12.
That was, we jumped out. That is, that one escapes me as well, but.
That is one thing. I do a lot of letter drafting at work.
So unless there was something else that was noted.
Question here. Richard Kirk. This is saying he wanted to give the land to his daughter. In the public hearing, it was his son. Has, has there been a change?
Well, if there was, it's not that, nothing that we need to be concerned about. Again, he's going to uh. He has this in front of the planning board, right? So I, there's gonna be a subsequent subdivision based on.
Yeah.
See, that is, oh, was not him.
Yeah, well, I guess.
He might have misunderstood, maybe.
Jumped out at me before, just looking at it now.
Right, that's what very well been.
Yeah, he was a senior. Two, two months ago, he felt different about.
So unless there's any other corrections noted, then somebody can make a motion that we.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I know, I was too excited to.
I will not second.
No, we're not done yet. Oh. I'm sorry. All right, now you can second.
I seconded.
There you go.
He doesn't want to do that. He just rushed it all.
Okay.
I gotta take another blood pressure.
Okay.
The training, uh. The sexual harassment training, everybody accomplish that and submit paperwork?
I did.
Right, because you and I were at the.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, it's took her anyway, so I don't know who took it. Yeah, yeah, I got it.
Besides, you're resigning the board.
There is, while the, the training, our annual training. Uh, in theory was kind of due today, so. Well, again, it, I think Matt's got it done. I've got. Fine done, so, and we just need to get you some blurb. This is what we looked at. Okay, yeah.
Those are the links from the pages that you asked.
Uh, well, there is, and I think Dale. They, we did their site, Department of State site, so you won't find, you know, that training, you know. The same way you did last time, even though it's basically. Similar in offerings. Um. You know, there's some that you can interact with, or I found the webinar stuff to be more interesting, actually. So you can, and they're on YouTube, so you could. So whatever you do, just, you know, you decide, I did the hot button issue and uh, the language moratorium. So, just make note of that, and then. Again, we're not in a position to have our, what we had been having the uh. Local train, so this is why. I have to do it for the time being. So, yeah, the sooner the better. Of course, the end of the year is not that far from now, so we should at least be able to do that. Other than that. Good luck to you.
Thanks.
Well, you're not going too far.
You can come visit.
Hopefully, we'll get some other people that are interested in. Joining the zoning board.
Well, yeah, either that, that would be nice, or. If they do reduce that, but we should have. You know, alternates or at least a little more wood over.
Yeah.
So again. The problem with that, if she hasn't stepped up with the trainings, that, you know. Doesn't really qualify her as an alternate.
Oh, right.
Other than that. So, what did you want to do there, Link? All right. Yes, thank you.
Thanks.